Call the meeting to order and I ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the June 28th County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. If you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he could help you with that. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item two is approve the meeting minutes from June 21st, 2016. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second. And there were County Commission meetings, meetings minutes, and there were Dell Rapids meetings. Can your motion include both of those A and B?
Yes.
Okay, motion includes A and B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $448,977.76.
Pay the bills.
Motion.
Second.
Any comments on the bills?
Commissioner Barrett. I wonder if the auditor might comment on, on some of the bills that were involved in the election that we had not long ago, the primary.
Auditor Litz.
I recognize that most of those bills, I think, appeared last week.
Yes, they did.
And there was a boatload of them, Bob.
Well, you know, I was going to, Bob Litz from the auditor's office, I was going to address this during old business or new business, depending on how you looked at it, means the bills are here, but I could just as well do it here now. You know, the total for the election is there. When we changed staff downstairs, we changed our process a little bit too. And we entered new vouchers for all the people that are in the election thing, and that's why they showed up on the bills the way they did. Today, I've done you a more general breakout of the election expenses, categorized them so you could see them. And the reason that I let them go into the bills like that, instead of just doing one lump, was I didn't figure it would hurt you folks to see the magnitude of what goes on even in a small election like that, and all the people that are involved. We had over 400 people that are involved in that election on that day. The other part was that I wanted you to know is when those went to press to get published, we put them in a more concise form, so we did not pay for all the publication costs with all those names and the sums and et cetera, so.
The total on the sheet that Bob gave us this morning was $52,516.93 was the total cost of this past election.
That's correct. And you know, past elections have gone from 32 to $46,000. So I think the cost, the extra cost of the ballots that we spent at the beginning of the race, we found out later on that we probably didn't need them, accounts for the bulk of the increase.
Okay, any questions, Commissioner?
Bob, with the adjustment of the hourly salary, have you had any difficulty finding people yet?
No, it's actually helped. I, it's always, it's always a chore, you know. And then Election Day, before you get there, I've got some older folks and health issues come up with them, or their partners, their loved ones. And so switching people in and out and keeping an alternative thing is, you know, alternate list has always been helpful. But I would tell you that I seem to be getting a newer group of retirees in there. And I think that, you know, getting close to market and getting those prices up there a little bit, those costs up there a little bit, it really helps me to get folks. They're, they're very grateful when they do get paid a little something extra. I look back and looked at some of the money we were paying them not too long ago, and it was $6 an hour in 2004 and 2005. And we're, depending on people's patriotism and their sense of civic duty, which is only going to take you so far, you know. And so thank you for letting me have those increases on the hourly wages and the cost for that election.
Well, sitting there for 12, 13, to 14 hours expands their patriotism.
It does get to be a long day. And some folks are, are getting up there in the years, and it is, it is a long, very difficult day, I notice, for some of them. And we assess that. I talked to the superintendents afterward, and we assess folks that are working in those elections, you know, with the superintendent, and, and we make decisions on who will call back.
Okay, any other questions? Have a motion and a second on the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Bob. Item number four is reports. Item A is auditor's account with the treasurer, county treasurer, as of May 31st, 2016. Item B is the Helpline Center 2015 Annual Report, and those are both on file at the treasurer's, at the auditor's office. Item five is personnel action. Item A is consider a motion to approve routine action. Is there a motion?
Ooh for, ooh for approval.
A motion and a second. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is a special action to promote Diane Rikema from the deputy director to, of equalization, to the director of equalization. Sorry, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. Both of the special commission action requests this morning are for hiring outside a salary policy. For the first one with Diane Rikema, that's very consistent with what you've done with department heads in the past. On the second action, to hire Judy Ziegler, senior deputy state's attorney for the state's attorney's office at $3,155.20 bi-weekly. That one is for two reasons. First, very, very well-qualified candidate, and rare exceptions, we've gone outside hiring range for people who are particularly well-qualified. But the bigger issue here too is that we struggle, as you know, with market issues for our attorney position, so being able to offer a competitive wage is important.
Any questions on special actions B and C? Take a motion for both?
So moved.
And a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any other comments? Commissioner Bender?
I just would like to comment, I mean, I think, one, we're, we're very thrilled to have two great candidates for these positions. And just as far as the, the second special exception for Judy, Judith Ziegler, I know that the, the state's attorney's office has lost a couple of really senior people to, to internal candidates that have gone over to become judges. And so the opportunity to be able to have somebody with significant trial experience to come in and step into some of those roles is a great benefit to, to the county. And so I'm very happy that we're able to approve these.
Additional comments? Okay, have a motion and a second to approve special actions B and C. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number six is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is notice from the South Dakota Department of Health for disinterment, reinterment permit issued for the remains of Heath Varkos. Item B is notice from the South Dakota Department of Health of disinterment, reinterment permit issued for the remains of Nathan Varkos. Item C is notice from the Brennan Rock Enroll Academy of intent to conduct a fundraising raffle on July 17, 22, 24, 31, August 7, 14, 21, and 28 at Badlands Motor Speedway, 2012 South Rock Boulevard, Brandon. Item A is planning and zoning notices. Item A is the first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice of a hearing to consider adoption of the 2015 International Building Code, 2015 International Residential Code, and the 2015 International Existing Building Code. I need a, a motion on that.
This is what, just to set the public hearing?
To set the hearing.
Thank you.
Do we have, Kevin, you want to talk on that? Do we have a date on that?
So, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Yes, this is the first reading just to set the public hearing date for these three code items. The staff has looked at it and looks at like July 19th would be a good date for that. At July 19th, the ordinance amendments would become effective approximately August 24th then for the new building codes.
Are there questions for Kevin on that? Commissioner Kelly?
Kevin, and I don't know if this is a question or a comment. I, I've been doing this code revision for too many years, when city and the county. It appears to me that every time we do this, we increase the cost of a basic home. And we never talk about how much it is, but whether it's a special thermostat or a special electrical outlet, whatever. And then we turn around and we weep and cry about the fact that there's no affordable housing. Well, somehow, and I don't know, I guess you, you run this through the builders and you run it through everybody, but it seems to be it's always been kind of a slam dunk, just get it done. And at some point, I don't know, I, you know, what, what fits in South Carolina doesn't necessarily fit in South Dakota. And I think there's a terrible amount of stuff in there, but, so that isn't a question, that's just a comment.
And just to piggyback on your comment, look at the book that Kevin has. Is that all three of them, or is that one of them?
This is one.
Yeah.
And the International Residential Code is the same size, and the existing code is a little smaller, but not much, so.
So yeah, how is a person supposed to go through that and find out if there's things that should not apply to us? That's pretty hard.
Man, sure.
That's pretty daunting.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Kelly?
My son remodeled or did a, you know, a flip type thing on a house. And it was amazing, and there, there was some, and I don't remember whether it was a GFI outlet or whatever it was, but, you know, what was called for in code and then what a regular one, there was a difference of like $2 to $25 or something. You know, there were just, they ran into a lot of that, and, and it, sometimes you just wonder if they're just being a little overzealous or if some company's gotten its four fingers in there so that you gotta buy their product. But, I don't know. I, I just think it's something that should be looked at a little harder than it is, but.
Commissioner Barrett?
Yeah, I don't disagree with Commissioner Kelly, but we're not adopting a whole book of changes, right? There's just a couple of things, or is it the whole book that's, you know?
So, no, the, the book is updated every three years.
So this is just the update part?
So there's the updates that are in the book itself, and then there's what you'll see in our ordinance that we have local amendments, and those local amendments get updated accordingly as, as these change too.
Are we required by state law or by federal law to do these? Or is it just our custom?
I, I believe it's state law that we, but if we don't update this, the state has updated these already. And so it defaults to these, I know that.
Scott Anderson, Planning Department, I also just wanted to comment that we work closely with the city of Sioux Falls, and they have already adopted this code. And one of the reasons that we work closely with the city of Sioux Falls is because we have housing that is on the periphery of the city limits, and eventually that will be annexed or will become part of the city. And we want to make sure that, that the same kind of code is being adopted in both the city and the county, so there's not issues when a house is eventually annexed into the city. So the city of Sioux Falls has already adopted their IBC, the International Building Code. It thinks become, became effective May 1st, or it's just recently, now we're in the process of adopting ours.
So Scott, pardon me, are we required by state statute to update these things?
You know, I'd have to look into that. I really don't know.
Okay.
So I, we can research that, but.
Our auditor seems to know.
Former builder.
On the side.
Former builder.
Sorry. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. From a former life, I was there when we instituted the adoption of these, and they went at a, they tried to adopt them statewide, but what the state decided to do was leave it up to the local jurisdictions exactly how much they wanted to adopt out of this book. And they could take the whole thing, or they could take certain things out of it, so there's a lot of flexibility in it. Sioux Falls has generally opted to take most things in there. There is a negotiating process with the Home Builders Association, where they take some things in and out, and they do some adoptions. But I had heard that the difference between three years ago and now, the base house line is about $1,500 worth of changes, and, and it goes on up depending on how big the house is, so.
Thank you. That's enlightening. I need a motion. Oh, Commissioner Barrett?
I just, you know, obviously, we have former city council persons here, and I wonder if, maybe Dean, if you have, did you guys have to adopt them as a city council, or, or did, did the staff just push it through?
Dean, you have to identify yourself.
And I'm sorry, I just picked neither.
No, thank you, Dean Karski. Going back a couple of months in memory, we always have a first reading, as you're doing here, to set up this second reading date. And typically, it's not done without a lot of discussion, and most of it will center on what are the changes and what are, as Commissioner Kelly said, what are the costs? I know, I remember a few years ago, and we were talking about updates and requiring or not requiring sprinkler systems in certain sized apartments. The thing that I always want to be cautious about as a city councillor was we found out that it really didn't matter what we wanted because the state legislators had given authority to the state fire marshal to already have that requirement. So they gave up their legislative authority to a.
Unelected.
An unelected official. So, you know, when you look at these things, or when I look at these things, those are something that I always want to be considered not to give up the authority that I have as an elected official to an unelected official, so. But going to the, these specific changes, I believe we accepted them all without any changes, so.
Thank you, Dean.
Commissioner, I do have one other comment, I guess. I will not be here on July 19th.
I will not be here on July 19th either.
We can change the date and move it one week. We'd need to move it to like the 26th. But I just also wanted to comment that we will have a, a brief or a presentation at that second reading that, and Kevin will outline the, the significant changes. I mean, there are lots of changes because some of it refers to chief building official, and our code's going to say the planning director when it comes to enforcement and some different things, or just who has the ability to approve stuff. And so there, there are a lot of minor changes, and then we will have a presentation for you that will outline the significant changes that you may be interested in.
Can you get this to us a little earlier so we have a chance to look at it before the meeting then?
I think it's in Dropbox.
Is it in Dropbox?
Robert, is that correct? It's in Dropbox, right?
Yes.
It's a separate file.
But if you are, if we're only going to have three here, maybe it will be better to, to move it off one week, and that's fine with us. It just, like I indicated, or as I stated, the city has already adopted this, and we don't want to be too far out, you know, following them.
I think in our authorizing the auditor, do we have to have a date in there? Because there's not a date listed in the memo, so we need to pick a date, and then I need to have a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice for a hearing this adoption on the 26th of July.
Did you have a comment before I have a second?
I do. The 26th, we've got some things in limbo that particular day, so if we could go the week after in August would be better.
Scott, does that still work for you? Okay, so it'll be the first week in August?
On my motion.
I don't have a date for that, so.
Okay. Are you looking at the date, Jeff?
In a second here.
August 2nd.
Okay, thanks.
I have a motion for August 2nd.
There is.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
A second for the second.
For the second, August 2nd, to authorize publication of notice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
That's a little more complicated than you figured it was going to be.
Item nine was petition for compromise of lien. There are none.
Yay.
Next there is public comment. If there's anyone who wants to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, and to keep your comments brief. Yeah, you have to come up here and you have to identify yourself, give your name and your address.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Tobias Shantz. I'm the finance officer with the city of Crooks, and I'm acting here on behalf.
Could you speak a little closer to the mic?
And I didn't catch your name. Tobias?
My name is Tobias Shantz. I'm the finance officer with the city of Crooks, and I'm acting in that official capacity right now. And the reason I'm here is because I would like to get the ball rolling, at least for an exchange on a joint jurisdiction for planning and zoning with the city of Crooks. We've already established contact with the state's attorney's office, but we're told any future development will be barred until August due to Sioux Falls' growth boundaries. And I was wondering if at least county could get moving a little sooner, at least.
August is a month away. I, I would think we will probably, we can take it under advisement and see what we would do.
Okay.
Next. But Scott's actually got some comments too. Planning and zoning is right behind you.
Tobias, is there anything else that you wanted to mention?
No, that was it. That's the only reason I showed up today.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Scott?
I will let you know, this is on our radar, and, and I have been contacted by the city of Crooks, and I've been working closely with our state's attorney's office. Sarah has been helping us. And this is a, a little bit more complicated than just the city of Crooks implementing a joint zoning ordinance with the, with, with Minnehaha County. And the reason this is a little bit more complicated is because it's two and a half miles from basically, as the crow flies, from the city limits of Sioux Falls to the city limits of Crooks. And we may not realize that that's the case, but the city has been growing north of Interstate 90. They've annexed a portion of the McCrossan Boys Ranch area. And furthermore, they, the city has, has an interest in the Heritage Development Foundation Park, the new industrial park that's being constructed between Sioux Falls and Crooks. And we, I've had conversations with Mike Cooper, my, my counterpart for the city. And yes, indeed, they are certainly interested in establishing or looking at that joint area and making some revisions. And so what we've been working with the city of Crooks is letting them know that there is also a third player in this, and that's the city of Sioux Falls, and we're all going to have to come together and, and, and work out or have a, a joint understanding of where that growth boundary is going to be. This is similar to what the city did probably 20 years ago with Brandon, and, and there was a, a joint area hammered out. And what we are waiting on, and I know Sarah maybe can speak to this as well, but the city is going through a, a process where they're identifying their, their capacity to be able to service for water and sanitary sewer. So they're looking at what these service areas are going to be, and, and they are providing water and sewer to that foundation park. So it's, just makes sense that that area probably will fall into the city's sphere of influence, and we will probably be doing some revisions with that. So we're, we are certainly in the, in the process of discussing this, and it's not a, it's not just a quick process that you can just say, we're going to implement zoning control. Because once we sort of decide where these boundaries are going to be between the city of Crooks and Sioux Falls, we will have to, from, from scratch, or from, from the initial beginning, we'll have to create a new zoning ordinance with the city of Crooks. And, and, and just like we have a joint zoning ordinance with the city of Dell Rapids and the city of Sioux Falls, we'll now have to have a joint zoning ordinance with the city of Crooks, and that's all going to have to be written. And that is a complicated process, and is going to require some input from both the city, from the county, from, from probably for that ordinance for those entities. Then we'll have to readopt our zoning map with the city of Sioux Falls and revise that territory that the city is going to have in their joint zoning control. So certainly on our horizon, but it's a, it is, and I don't want to overexaggerate, but it is a very complicated and a long task to put this together, so.
How does that affect farmers who live in that area?
Well.
Because there is a lot of farms within two miles of Crooks.
There are a lot of farms, and that's why you cannot just rush into this or implement it immediately because I'm a firm believer that you need to have significant public participation because you don't want to adopt a zoning ordinance and then have this sprung on people and say, I had no idea. So just like when we adopted our, our envisioned 2035, I sort of anticipate that we're going to have to have some significant public, public participation meetings where we invite the citizens around that, in that joint, proposed joint jurisdiction area to some meetings. We'll need to have some input on what they'd like to see in this zoning ordinance because we are, you know, really implementing another layer of jurisdiction and rule-making on, on these people. And joint zoning control, it can become an issue of representation because we, you have people that feel that they are now giving over their right, their control of their property to officials that they have no right in voting for. And that is a, it's certainly a touchy subject sometimes, but you have to bench it in the, in the, in the form that it really is for the public good, and, and you get them to buy into it. That's really one of the, one of the ways that we, we have to move forward with, with zoning. So I, I mean, I, we'd be glad to answer any questions, but it's a complicated and a lengthy process.
Commissioner Kelly, oh, Sarah.
Just to update the commission, I have spent some significant time looking into this. I was told by the city of Sioux Falls that they would be finalizing their growth plan in mid to late August, so that's where that August date came from. We were going to see where their growth plan was, and then they have indicated some interest in working with us on this, so.
Commissioner Kelly?
Scott, the joint jurisdiction is more than just plating and conditional use permits, is that? Or is that the primary function of the?
Um, it is both. It, but it's more than just conditional use permits. It's, it's zoning control, so it's rezonings. And, you know, every, all the uses will have to be identified, that you're going to allow, like conditional uses, permitted uses, special permitted uses. You know, basically, well, it's not basically, we will be adopting a whole new zoning ordinance just for that area around whatever, whatever's negotiated around the city of Crooks.
So if, if a farm, if farms, what is it, agri?
A1 agriculture.
It would take like we're doing the other stuff to rezone that into anything else would take both Crooks and, and Minnehaha County to approve? And if it were not approved, it stays, is that?
That's correct. However, and that, you, you, that's a perfect example of how uses can vary because in, in our joint area for the city of Sioux Falls, a con, an animal confinement operation is not even a permitted use or a conditional use or any, it's not even allowed in the joint area of Sioux Falls because it's anticipated that that joint area that we control with the city of Sioux Falls is not suitable for a feedlot because of its proximity to Sioux Falls. I, I can see similar issues like that cropping up with Crooks, with the city of Crooks. And, and that's, I'll go back to that example, that you are going to need to have full understanding of, of the residents that live in that area. I think it's only fair that they understand what changes this might mean for them.
Commissioner Kelly, or Bender, excuse me.
Scott, so just, like, can you give us any, what do you view the next step being? Is it waiting until the city of Sioux Falls comes out with their growth plan and then starting?
I think that's the, that is the initial step, and then subsequent steps after that. I think that we need to bring the, ultimately, the city of Crooks and the city of Sioux Falls have to come together and sort of determine what that area is going to be and who's comfortable with that boundary. Or they're going to need to identify a boundary for us. And, and then we will continue with working with the city of Crooks on what the boundary will be on the basically north, east, and west side of Crooks.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Barrett?
I just would say that, you know, obviously, this is exactly what we have with Dell Rapids. And last, last week, we had to meet with the Dell Rapids City Council in order to approve a, a change for a property on the edge of Dell Rapids and just outside their city limits, stone's throw from the city limits. And we do that with the city of Sioux Falls, and, you know, we would then have to have joint meetings with the, the Crooks City Council and decide if that fireworks stand could go there or not.
We also had a, one with Dell Rapids that took us, I believe, like, three meetings to get it straightened out because there could not come consensus between the two boards. And so that makes it even more difficult, so. Okay, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Commissioner, or, excuse me, Auditor Litz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a comment. This, this could affect a few voters out there, and we may move them around. So I just want you to know that we'll keep our eye on this process, and if it becomes apparent, we'll let you know if we have to move voters.
We're a long ways from that.
I think so, but I still want to keep, keep on top of it, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, that will go on to regular business. Item number 10 is a briefing from Minnehaha County Economic Development Association on upcoming strategic planning. Good morning, Nick.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Foshine, Minnehaha County Economic Development Association, Makita for short. Hard to believe we're looking at the last week of June here. Where's summer going? But really, this summer, we're, we're kind of celebrating the fact that Makita turns 25. And so you think about 25 years ago, what Minnehaha County looked like, what a lot of our communities looked like. a lot of our communities looked like, and things have changed a lot. And no doubt in part because of our collective work around economic development at a regional level. And so, um, it's a good time to take a pause and to think about, reflect back on the past twenty-five years and think about what it is that we do today, the services we provide, and map out where we wanna be in five, ten, or the next twenty-five years, and think more strategically about that. And so about a year and a half ago, we contracted with, um, a firm based in Renner called Dakota Resources, and they have a, a reputation of working statewide with development organizations. And so we designed a process that includes, um, four community conversations throughout, um, both Minnehaha and Lincoln County, and, um, really designed to get the perspective and some insight from businesses and community leaders, um, about the challenges they face and maybe ways that we can plug in at a regional level and provide some assistance. And so, um, we've already started these conversations, and you've probably seen one of these invitations come to your mailbox. But we were in tea on June second, and we were in Crooks last week for one of these. We have two left, and, and we'll be in Canton in July, on July thirteenth, and then in Garrettson on August third. And so I would invite you to attend both or one of those, um, community conversations. It's, um, it's been an interesting process, and I'm so glad that we did it because, um, the feedback we're getting is incredible. And it's amazing to see that, uh, no matter on the surface how different our communities look, we're all working on the same thing. And so, um, we have a lot in common. And I think that's what's really important through this process, that we identify that. And, and secondly, I think it's also important that in the end, that we provide a good definition of what regional economic development is. You know, we talk a lot about how economic development may take on a different flavor from community to community. They may emphasize different things. But, um, at a regional level, what is that definition that we can point to and really celebrate? So, um, so the, the rest of the process will be that after we finish up these community meetings this summer, we'll then take it back to the board and really analyze what are the main themes that came out of those meetings, and then, um, create a strategy from there. So by the time we have our annual meeting in November, uh, we hope to be able to unveil some of our findings from this. But, um, want, wanted to invite you to be a part of the process and to, to let you know that we're, we're taking a proactive look at development in our two counties, so.
Thank you, Nick. Are there any questions for Nick? Comments? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Item number eleven is consider a bid award for CBM Managing Services for Institutional Food Services. Bid was opened in June fifteenth. Jeff Gromer, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden at the jail. I got a couple items for you today. The first is the, uh, bid by CBM for the food service and commissary services at the jail. We opened the, did the RFP, and the bids were open on June fifteenth, and we're just recommending that we move forward with negotiating a contract with CBM.
Okay.
You're all well aware, CBM's been the provider here for a long time.
Commissioner Bender.
Um, Warden, I just wonder if you could comment, one, on, um, why you think we only got one response to the bid, and then two, kind of how this, how this compares with the, what we have been paying for, um, meals under the current contract.
My, I guess my opinion on why we only got one bid is because CBM has been here for so long, they're a local provider, and it's very hard for another vendor to come in and compete with CBM when their corporate offices are here, their warehouses are here, they're just local. I can just foresee it being very difficult for them to compete with that local influence, with simplest shipping costs. I mean, CBM has to go a few blocks as opposed to however many miles.
I was here six years ago in the audience when they did bid the food service, and we think there were three, I know there were three, possibly four, this room was full of people talking about food service, and it ended up going back to CBM at that time, although my recollection is the costs were extremely close. Um, and, but we didn't have the kitchen done at that time, and so there were good reasons to stay with CBM as far as transportation costs and stuff because of the lack of a kitchen. It was very interesting. Commissioner Bender.
So just on a follow-up, can you, can you kinda compare the, the price that was bid versus what we're paying right now under our current contract?
The bid price is about twelve percent higher than the current contract, and that's, um, I'm assuming just due to increased costs for food service in general. Um, I, and Shane Shinahaw is here with CBM, he can probably answer some questions. If you have him, he can probably give more detail than I can. Um, I don't for, I'm assuming their business is very similar to the jail business where it's just simple, costs continue to increase, labor costs are harder to fill. Um, historically, we have had, we have had more, um, inmate labor that we've been able to provide them, which has been, allowed them to drive our costs down a little bit, um, with our jail numbers, as we've been having multiple conversations about. Um, we're seeing less and less inmates that are serving longer-term sentences for, I guess, lack of a better term, minor charges, or charges that require less security. The vast majority of our inmates aren't sentenced and are here for some fairly significant felony crimes. Um, those obviously aren't good trustee candidates. Um, and so that's really driven down our ability to use inmate labor to offset some of the costs.
Additional comments? Commissioner Bender?
I don't mean to, go ahead.
I can make some comments. Uh, our organization, what I have a full-time job with, is, uh, seeing some of those same significant costs, and we have a buying group that we deal with that, uh, frankly is associated with the hospitals and some of the nursing homes, and the cost of raw food has gone up dramatically in the last year because of lots of things, including weather-related issues and transportation-related issues. So twelve percent is in the ballpark, unfortunately.
One thing to point out with the food service contract, too, we, we refer to it as the food service contract. It's a lot more complicated than just the food service. CBM and the food service, any food service vendor, um, typically also supplies the inmate kiosk system, which is the, the mechanism for the inmates to correspond with jail administration, with medical administration, to make their commissary orders. There's a very significant bookkeeping function that goes into that to managing some of the inmate accounts. Um, they interface with their phone service contract. All these different vendors and entities, they have to intertwine through this kiosk and bookkeeping system, and that's, it's a complicated part of the process to try to manage. And I'm assuming, I don't know for a fact the cost on those, but obviously any hardware and software application comes with some costs as well.
Commissioner Bender?
Well, and we had some opportunity to interact via email about this, and, um, and you did provide some examples of other, um, jails in the area that are, you know, that this cost is very competitive to what, um, other places are paying. So I'm not really questioning the cost. I think it's just another opportunity for us to point out that while CPI and our funding is at zero, um, that, you know, that's not really reflective of the costs that, um, that we're having to bear.
And I think those, some of those cost savings we discussed, we're, we compared some other agencies of similar size very close to us, and our, our costs are actually less. And I think that's that benefit of being right here in Sioux Falls. I mean, it's so close, and it's, it's a very, historically, it's been a very good working arrangement between us and CBM.
And I believe we just, uh, renewed the contract with JDC about two weeks ago. Commissioner Bender?
Um, just a quick question. Do we have a lot of special diet requests?
Yes.
Is that getting to be more and more of an issue?
We, we have a lot of them. It's, it's really a big issue to manage the legitimate special diet requests from the preference special diet requests, and that's, that's a management issue. But obviously, special diets, they push your costs up a little bit, too, because it's forcing the kitchen to make some adjustments, and obviously those costs are increased a little bit. But we spend a lot of time trying to manage our number of special diets.
My question was gonna be next, and you kind of answered it. How much time do you have to spend on certifying the special diet request, so to speak?
A lot of it's done through interaction between the food service provider and the medical service provider. Um, so there's some, it's, it's usually pretty rare that we have to go to the extent of certifying an allergy or things like that. A lot of it can be done through outside records and finagling it, more or less. Most of the, fortunately for us, most of our inmates are relatively short-term, so if somebody comes in, they have a special diet request, it's there for a short stay, and then the inmate moves on out of the jail system, bonds out, or is transferred out, and then we can get back to business as usual. But it just takes a little work between the medical provider, food service provider, and the inmate, and come to a resolution.
Commissioner Burr?
Um, CBM getting, uh, the contract with the county predates my being elected to the county commission. And I remember, uh, when the contract was renewed at one point, Commissioner Tweet made the comment that, I believe, we were the first contract for CBM, which is now a multi-state, uh, and I would, I would guess, multi-multi-million dollar operation. And, uh, she was very proud of the fact that we had given them the first step towards this and that they represent a Sioux Falls, a Minnehaha County, uh, success story. And, uh, I would congratulate them again on bringing forward, uh, what appears to be the winning bid, and I'll make a motion to sign this contract.
Your motion?
I wanna just correct. I, I don't have a contract. All I'm asking for is authorization for the sheriff and I to negotiate a contract with CBM, and then I'll go back to you with a finalized contract.
Okay. I have a motion from Judge to accept the bid.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
One of the representatives is here.
Yep. I saw that. Did you have any comments?
No, I, I don't.
You'll have to come to the microphone, I'm sorry, and identify your name for the record.
Shane, Shane Shinahaw, one of the owners of CBM. Um, and, and it is true, uh, twenty years ago, we came to you, uh, to the commission back then and asked for a, uh, asked for a chance. Uh, the county, Minnehaha County gave our family, uh, six brothers, or, or six kids and my mom and dad. We had, uh, the, uh, Minnehaha Co-op Cafe up on North Cliff Avenue, and that's still our family farm. Um, but, uh, you gave us a chance back then. Uh, we, we beat the national competitor by one penny. Uh, I got, we got lucky, we were, we were guessing at it, and, and we got lucky. But today, uh, we, we, we're over, we're over about a seventy million dollar company a year. Um, all the brother-in-laws, all the sisters, we're all together, still live here, still live in Minnehaha County, and, uh, we work every day. And, uh, just wanna thanks, thank you for the opportunity again, and, and we'll work hard every day with you and, uh, the sheriff's department and, uh, and to feed these inmates, so, but thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you. I have a motion, and, oh, we already, we're, it's already.
Shane, you, your, your family's a compliment to this county and this community, and, uh, it's homegrown, and it's successful, and you're honest and good working. And I, I guess it's just, uh, on behalf of the citizens of Minnehaha County, I'd like to say thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. And, uh, uh, within a couple of weeks, our new store over here will be open, and, uh, and, uh, hopefully that goes off good, too. So we're excited to be part of this community.
I just wanna make sure, Shane, that you don't feed them too well so they wanna stay.
We'll make sure of that, yeah.
That's a problem.
All right. All right. With that, we'll move on to item number twelve, which is consider an amendment, number two, to the inmate telephone service agreement with ICS Solutions.
This is simply an adjustment to the, um, phone service and video visitation agreement that we've had in place with CBM, or with IC Solutions. Um, I don't know if you recall, it was probably a few months ago, I came with the First Amendment to this contract to adjust some of our calling rates that was due to a ruling that was issued by the FCC. Um, this is the follow-up, a follow-up adjustment to the contract on that. The FCC's final rule change, um, is implemented on June twentieth, and that's required IC Solutions to adjust some of their fee structure, which has a corresponding impact on our, uh, commission revenue payment that we were slated in the original contract to receive. Essentially, what the amendment or addendum does is reduces our commission payment from seventy-eight point one percent to sixty-eight, sixty-eight point one percent, which takes effect in August of this year. The contract was originally structured where we received, uh, forty-three percent of the, a commission of forty-three percent on revenue that was above the minimum annual guarantee. So there's been a couple of changes that has taken place. Our numbers of inmates with access to the phone system has gone down, and part of that's due to a less use of the work release program and the implementation of the electronic monitoring program. Prior to the electronic monitoring program being implemented, those work release inmates were in custody. So when they weren't at work, they had access and utilized the inmate phone system. With the implementation of the electronic monitoring program, those folks are no longer in custody and therefore don't have access to the inmate phone system, which has reduced our numbers of inmates that actually have access to the phone. Requires a corresponding reduction in the minimum annual guarantee that the, of revenue that the phone company's gonna see, um, which obviously then is gonna change our commission payment. Now, with that, plus the implementation of the FCC rule, they've, we needed to adjust the minimum annual guarantee and the percentage of the commission. Um, so what they've looked at their numbers and indicated that it'll be a sixty-eight percent commission, um, from this point moving forward, and then the minimum annual guarantee is, uh, been reduced to three hundred thousand dollars in revenue. So we'll be paid at sixty-eight percent of that three hundred thousand dollars for our commission.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
I believe you have a copy of the addendum for signature?
Yes. Don't we? Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Item number thirteen is consider a motion to authorize the purchase of one two thousand sixteen Chevy half-ton Sil, half-ton Silverado pickup in the amount of twenty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars from Beck Motors from contract number sixteen eight six five, competitive bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota. This was deferred from June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. Are there any questions on this?
Madam Chair, we have had some discussion on this one, but I will make a motion to approve this purchase.
Second. I have a motion in a second. This was approved in last year's budget. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen is consider a motion to amend February nine, two thousand sixteen, authorization to purchase two one-ton Chevy Silverado thirty-five hundred pickups, total cost sixty-five thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars from Jerry's Automotive from a contract number sixteen eight six six dash eight A, a competitive bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota. Need questions on that one? We have DJ here, if there's a question.
Madam Chair, again, this has been an item of discussion. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase. I would make a kind of.
Okay. I have a motion in a second with a comment. Commissioner Burr?
I just think that, uh, we, we may have been, uh, treated in somewhat of a sharp manner by, uh, folks that bid on these contracts, and I think we need to fully document ourselves going forward and, uh, hold their feet to the fire if they make a commitment to sell us at a certain price.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJ, for being on hand. Item number fifteen is consider a resolution to compromise various categories of county aid leads in accordance with the county pos, policy. Auditor Litz.
Boy, he's hogging the microphone today.
Yeah.
That's what happens when I get up at five and work out. Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the auditor's office, uh, once again. Uh, this is a continuation of a process. This is our annual lean cleanup process, and the first four steps have already been, uh, taken care of by this commission. And, uh, step number five was the one that was left out, and the reason that it was left out, of course, was Carol Beld out of human services, leaving those poor folks with too much work to do. I just kid you. Uh, but anyway, it took them a little bit longer to do it this time, and so what we're really bringing forward is item number five on this here to get that approved. And I would also, uh, have you know that I've had, uh, conversations with Mr. Katmeyer, and I don't know if Sarah was, uh, apprised of this situation, but the item number one, uh, Mr. Katmeyer would like to discuss before we do this cycle, uh, this process again. And I, I can assume that, uh, he'll be bringing something forward to you, and my office will work with him. So what we're looking for is approval of item number five.
So, Bob, that would be item E on our list, which is liens identified as uncollectible reduced to zero.
That's, that's right. And it's deceased, transient, SSI homeless, or no, no resources, reduced to zero.
So that's the only motion that we, we want. This is something we do every single year.
Yes, and, and this process will be coming back in full again, uh, with all five steps next time.
Commissioner?
Uh, Bob, every time we do this, I have a second thought in my mind, and I don't have an issue with the people that we know we'll never be able to collect from because there's nothing attached to real estate. How much work is it to leave it on a real estate transaction that we're, are, are we not including those at all? Because frankly, at some point, there's gonna be a real estate transaction.
I believe, I believe that is what Mr. Katmeyer is referring to, an item. I believe, I believe that is what Mr. Katmeyer is referring to in item number one. He thinks that's substantial enough money to go to, and, and I would defer to him at that point, and I believe he'll be bringing that forward sooner when we do this process again.
There'd be a motion on item E, which is leads identified as uncollectibles, reduced to zero.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Bob. Item number sixteen is the Minnehaha County liaison reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Burr?
Uh, Madam Chair, last night, we had a planning and zoning commission meeting here, and uh, it appears that one of our commissioners, by the way, may have moved out of state at this point. But uh, it was supposed to be a joint meeting with the city of Sioux Falls, but the planning commission for the city of Sioux Falls failed to get a quorum, and so uh, we immediately postponed any uh, of those joint jurisdiction items. And uh, one of them, although it didn't seem to be necessarily affecting their business because it would be taking effect too late, was for a fireworks stand. So here it is, end of, end of June, there's a fireworks stand on our joint uh, thing, and we couldn't approve it or disapprove it. Um, so those people then went home, and uh, but then we had an interesting one in Brandon, outside of Brandon, where we don't have a joint jurisdiction, I don't think, for a water tower. They wanted to build uh, uh, on the east side of Brandon, and the neighbors were here. Uh, and apparently it's uh, one of those deals where uh, the, the neighbors were all caught flat-footed, they had never been contacted before getting the notice a week ago that they're going to build a hundred and forty-foot water tower, you know, right over there. And uh, so we deferred action on that for ninety days, um, to allow for additional communication, but uh, folks were pretty adamant over there. It is in the county, it's uh, it's a mile from the city limits of, of Brandon, but apparently it's at the right altitude and stuff for the equalization of the water pressure throughout the system and some other stuff, but uh, so we deferred action, and uh, it'll be back.
Additional reports?
I was in, um, here in this past week with, I am Erin Certkaska, the J D A I coordinator, and Jamie Gravitt, the J D C director, and we met with eight other counties about what is happening in J D Cs across the eastern part of the state of South Dakota, which was with the changes in state law and the changes in J D A I that have come forth. We've seen a decrease in the number of kids in J D C across the state. I believe we identified about, um, roughly, we figured about a hundred and twenty-one or a hundred and twenty-two beds that were available on the east side of the state. We don't have that many kids in J D C, so obviously the costs are quite high. Um, some of the counties run their J D Cs um, in conjunction with their jails, and so they'll move their jail staff over to the kid's side if they have a kid in custody, um, keeping their costs a little bit lower. There's other ones that have um, specific, specific designated J D Cs like we do, which makes their costs really high if you've only got a couple kids in there and you have all the staffing. So we saw costs range from a hundred and seventy-five dollars a night if they were in a jail setting, to um, over seven hundred, darn near eight hundred dollars a night. Um, so we met for a few hours um, last week to discuss what can we do going forward, because with everybody's prices all being different, then are we going to have shopping around in different counties? Um, some counties were talking about regionalizing some of the centers, um, if one county closes, can we regionalize and stick all those kids in another area? There was conversation about the state possibly. Right now, they reimburse those smaller counties for transportation costs, would there be additional money to help those counties with transportation costs if we would shut down some of the J D Cs or try to figure out how to consolidate? So um, we looked at average daily populations and um, and costs and several other things. We're going to meet again in September after some more data has been collected and some more numbers and stuff, and Erin's working on some of that stuff. It was a very good meeting, um, very good conversation, and people were very open with what was going on in their counties, and so, um, first time that's happened, and it was very good, and I would pat our staff on the back for coming forward to me with the data that they had, and said this is something we need to look at, so um, we move forward. Commissioner Burr?
I should have mentioned this also at planning last night, uh, at the end of our regular meeting, we had two guys from the Department of Agriculture talking about uh, CAFOs and CAFO enforcement, and uh, the steps they take to, to, to help people establish CAFOs, the steps they take to enforce violations of uh, state law, et cetera, and uh, it was very interesting.
Anything else? All right, with that, we'll go on. Is there any new business? Robert, did you have new business?
Commissioners, Robert Wilson of the commission office. As strange as it may be to start thinking about uh, next year and next legislative session, uh, we uh, uh, resolutions from each county are due to the S D A C C, South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, by the end of July. And so we, uh, Carol Muller and myself have been uh, just talking about a timeline that we will uh, present to you here in, in the next uh, couple of days for getting your feedback for uh, resolutions that you might like to see, uh, presented to the association for consideration as part of the uh, association platform going in, into the session, as well as getting feedback from department heads. Uh, and we are, that's gonna, gonna be an effort that we will be uh, working on throughout the month, both to, to give uh, an opportunity to uh, both just collect ideas, but also flush those out as a, as a commission, and uh, and ultimately um, uh, bring an, an agenda item forward for you to uh, to consider what, what resolutions you uh, will present to, to the association for consideration at the convention. That'll be an ongoing uh, discussion over the next month, but I just wanted to, number one, let you know we're working on that, and then also plant the seed that uh, it, it's time to uh, to start thinking of, of things that you may want to bring forward as resolutions, uh, and uh, if, if those need to be flushed out at all, please let, let the office know, and we will uh, uh, get to work on any, any research or any um, um, preparation that that may require.
Um, coming off of that, Dick and Robert and I also attended the um, district area meeting this last week in Flandre. That was part of the discussion, um, we talked about the things that have happened the last couple of years and the positive response we've had from the legislature and some, some of the issues we brought forward, and we wanted to make sure, you know, as a southeast district, that we didn't push things that didn't need to be pushed when we've been, we, we've been so positively received at this point. Um, they also talked about making sure that if you have a specific item for your specific county, that you don't push it through the association. That happened a little bit last year, and they did comment that Minnehaha County's been very good about, if we have our own issues, that we have used our own lobbyist, which usually was Ken, um, or staff to lobby those issues for them. Um, Dick, do you think of anything else that we talked about at that meeting? I think that really was the major part of, of discussion that day, um, so, it was a good meeting.
It's so, it's so difficult, they, they put these meetings in places that aren't meeting places.
Yeah.
And so we were in one room, the commissioners, and everybody else was in another, and they tried to talk loud, you know, big, uh, I, I understand these other counties each don't have facilities, but it, it's uh, it's very difficult to hear, for me particularly, to hear, but uh, difficult just to coordinate the whole thing.
There really wasn't any hearing, it was a long, narrow building, and they were all on one end, and we were in the back of the building, but on the other side of the door, so um, we just kind of went on with our own meeting. That being said, Lincoln County will be the sponsors for the next um, regional meeting, and then I think we have it back in December again.
Yep.
If I remember correctly, so, um, but it was a good meeting of commissioners, and it was a pretty good turnout, maybe twenty of us, twenty-five, something like that, so it was a good meeting. Any other new business? Any old business? Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for litigation, contracts, and personnel.
Motion.
Second. Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.